Preschool. It's all right. Fourth year. We always like the, so that the staff too can see hometown where they're from too. She's from Molton. That's down in Davis County country. Monica Beavons, first year, she can be teaching at Lakeview. Dakota Doyle is teaching kindergarten, first year at Solon. Jackie Peterson from Lakeview Iowa, second year teaching first with us, first grade. Gretchen Hartley, middle school special education. She actually student taught with us and she'll be taking the position that she student taught. From Iowa State. Brendan McNulty, he's our eighth grade math teacher from Washington Iowa. He's been teaching the last eight years at Iowa Falls. Iowa Falls. We found out that Mr. Shealy was his middle school football coach. So Jessica Pugh from Grimes, she'll be our art four eight art teacher, first year. Nathan Watson comes from Missouri. He'll do our high school social studies and business certified in both. Tara Opiola is our high school science, first year. And then our support staff, Delsey will be at Lakeview as a secretary, Erin Dahl, a high school secretary, Samantha Staley, an associate at Lakeview. Kevin Connor, a middle school associate. Ulu won't even try to pronounce his last name. He's our activities custodian, Todd Stone King. He was came to us last spring, but just a chance to introduce him to everybody. And then we have Sonya Justice at Lake, Lakeview Food Service and the two new hires Benjamin Renaud and Cindy Scharf. And we haven't got pictures yet, but that is our new staff. We're pretty, pretty excited. Our administrators did a great job bringing, bringing these candidates in. Good. We'll keep them busy. So we're pretty excited about our new staff. Wanted to celebrate that.
The other celebrations.
Casey has something I've been touching on.
Casey provided some phone numbers for us, just to give you an idea. I can grab it. Yeah. So Casey wanted us to note and celebrate that we had four cheerleaders selected as Universal Cheerleaders Association All Americans at our summer camp. Five Solon cheerleaders auditioned for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade through our Spirit of America production. All five were selected as performers and we've got two that are registering to attend. For high school, we have a hundred and two in football. Cross country has fifty six and volleyball has fifty four. And I know we've got some crossovers, but we've also got a, the musical going on right now. They practice in twice a week, so.
Just jump to, because I'm guessing Jess is under focus, maybe you want Jess to let her start or?
Yeah, we can do that instead that we can run. So.
And one way back to your, your families that are, I saw a full parking lot when I drove by, so.
It was extremely good. I thought too, you know, it was coming here and it ends at six, so I just walked on the lawn and it was just good to see all the things.
I saw smiling faces.
Yeah, I have those students from up to me and helping me with this, but so it's always good to see them.
So what we've asked Jess to do, our focus on learning is one, I wanted Josh just to kind of give you a quick overview of I, our ISAS, our data compared to state. And then we spent a lot of time, Josh and the principals discussing and coaches, TLS coaches, how, how we're gonna support these new teachers so that they're highly successful. And so I thought just have Jess talk about, because you've got four or five of those.
I got a few.
Yeah. So Jess, how are we gonna make sure these teachers are highly successful?
If they're a first year teacher, they have myself, they have the instructional coach who we've heard, they have the model interventionist coach who Beth Kat higher, so. And they have their teammates. It's really the team atmosphere and approach. I was talking a lot about that this morning with the staff. So there's a lot of people in that building who need support for them and they're supporting.
Lot of people will be checking on us in and out and giving them that support and yeah. And then we've really freed up our coaches to start the year to really help them establish their routines and establish their workshop model and things like that.
Yeah, earlier our instructor was actually as a player for the first week, she'll spend most, majority of her time in the classroom and the teachers. So help the classroom management set up routine.
I know the first year new district, some of our teachers are relatively young in their career. That's always the worry spot from what we hear. We did ISB and stuff, the first couple of years are always the area where you worry about losing a teacher from the field. So I think the more we can do to be supportive and make that process easy for that was important. Probably, you know, we have the board, if there's anything, if the board can you help make that process smoother and make it easier, if there's things we can do that speed that along. Let us know. We're happy to look at whatever we can to, to kind of use that. And I think it's not just with our new staff, obviously, we need all of our staff who want to be supportive and create an environment where they can can be successful and enjoy the work every day. So keep us in the loop if there's things that we can do. Questions on board, if you'd love any of your.
Thanks. It's gonna be an awesome year. I have lots of parents that are approaching and just say thank you for the work we did last year. I think some areas are more exciting than I am, that I'm only in one building. I'm very excited for that, so. It's just, it's gonna be a good year. It's been very optimistic and just good vibes. Everyone, we're all just ready to go.
Yeah.
Well, we have some Solon grads in some of these, you know, which is, which is fun too. There is usually a family, it's always Solon grads we have teacher.
Um, gosh, I actually had that somewhere. I believe what do we say, one out of six, one out of six are Solon graduates? Yeah. Eleven in the past seven years, eleven in the past seven years. Yeah. Yeah.
It's a great home. It really is.
You know, the idea, you know, when, you know, there are multiple reasons why we went, you know, last year, the timing and the articulation and things like that. What was nice, nice is we opened, we opened our, our year with all K five teachers together at Lakeview with Mel and Jessica leading professional development on, on, on a common topic that will be K five. Yeah. So we'll continue that articulation. We'll just have two leaders leading the way. Yeah.
And the partnership with Mel is very incredible. She's an amazing, strong woman leader, which is just exciting for me. I, I love the other four gentlemen on the agency. It is exciting a little bit to have just one more female.
That's great.
Just, we were very appreciative last year. Yeah, for sure. Everything everyone recognizes that, that it was probably more than any of us anticipated with every year that went on last year to have to manage two buildings, but everything that was going on. And so I think the effort you put in was commendable in the district. Pretty appreciate everything you did. So we're happy to have you on board and have you as one of our leaders, because I think you do a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, in retrospect, we said, I mean, not fail, but it was a tough year. But I, what I do appreciate is the much support is the other I really could give you they did. And we're glad we're a year down the road and had a great search process. We ended up with somebody fits our culture and just watch the energy that's been thrown at us.
Great things were accomplished with the, pre-K, I guess, pre-K through five models last year. So it's, it's impressive. It's a present year. I think we're gonna, we're gonna see some of that data here momentarily. And I think it's a, it's a testament to the hard work of your team that to pull it all through despite all the challenges last year. So. And so I know that those kind of are gonna be, said now we're first graders this year and you know, another batch of kids who wide eyed coming to school and who ride the bus last year. It's just some of those kind of are just on the bus that first day. And then watching their parents cry as the bus pulled away. So. It's, I think it's harder sometimes for the parents of the kids to make the transition back, so.
Right.
Again, I think there's often weird years to work.
Speaking of last year, I want to move into, well, I mean, we, we achieved so much and we're successful in so many ways that I know the Iowa State Assessment for school, school progress is just one piece of it. But it really does reflect the overall success that we had. And so I wanted Josh put these together and I asked him to kind of talk about this.
So this data really comes from the official database from Iowa Statewide Assessment Student Progress. From our database. So this time, remember back in July, right? But now I've added, the state provided state numbers. It's percentages or percent, yeah, percentages of students who are proficient. And I'll talk about ELA here in English Language Arts. And if you recall, English Language Arts test includes both reading and writing. So that's like it's a combined score. And these are just percentage of students proficient. This, this data includes percent proficient as well as those who exceeded beyond proficiency. So highly proficient. So looking at this data, we have double digits above the state. In some cases, twenty four percent more proficient. And for ELA, the majority is twenty percentage points above.
If you lay this over and they, the old Iowa assessments, these numbers exceed that. And it was this, I mean, the reason why we went to a new assessment is to make it more rigorous, put it more above grade level, align it tighter to the core. And we're, and, and they were warning us, hey, we're gonna roll this out, but keep in mind, you're, you're probably gonna see, you're not, numbers that you're not used to. And, and we've been opposite. I think one of the reasons why is when so many people were basing curriculum and instruction off of the Iowa assessment. We were, we were putting in just rock solid pedagogy and we were aligning to the core, even though the old Iowa assessment wasn't very tight to the, to, to the Iowa core. We were aligning our practices and our curriculum to the Iowa course. So we were, and then we, the writing initiative is a big part of literacy. Which I can't think of any district across Iowa that does as much writing as our kids. And, and so kudos to our instruction, to our students. Yeah, for, yeah. You know, one, one thing too, that we always run into and we talked about, not only are, were our kids prepared with the knowledge to take, to, to score so high. But it also takes effort. And our kids put forth the effort, not all, I mean, you don't always get a child's best effort on a standardized test because what's it mean to the child? So that, that's another factor for parents, you know, instilling that into their kids. They do your best on that. And, and teachers the same way, instilling that, so. That's math.
And then math in double digits. ELA is obviously our strongest content area, but math is very, very second. We're doing, we're beginning the process of really re reevaluating, doing our math commitment or commitment towards our math curriculum. And our curriculum, again, I'll say this, our curriculum is the Iowa Core standards. That's our curriculum resources are what we use to make sure that we get at that, get at those standards. And there's some recommitment that we need to do. And we're gonna, we're looking at some implementing some new resources, materials, especially at the K five level that I think are all us take off, really do in terms of consistency. Secondary level, we're looking at some new resources that will support support those standards as well as, and looking at that blended pattern model to differentiate our instruction work is that inevitable? Watching that project Tuesday.
One thing that Zach pointed out that's not shown in this graph is, remember, we didn't take it, the test when we had the March closure. So we missed a year, but if we go back another year, so when our juniors from this assessment. So gonna be seniors. So our juniors this past spring, when they were freshmen, from the time they were freshmen to when they took it their junior year, that class went up ten percent of the kids made proficiency. We went from we jumped ten percent of that class. So, you know, a hundred kids in that class, ten more kids in that span got to proficiency.
That was, that was maybe one of my questions, which is, you know, we used to have the old, that's the cohort data. And obviously we had got challenges and we switched to a new task. And at what point do we have enough data that we can start thinking about cohorting that again and contracting that? I'm sure you guys can do that on a lower level, but at least I'll just talk to you guys about more presentation. I'm just trying to think about, are we, are we another year, another couple of years away from having enough data?
I think it's a year for sure. Because we got that break in the middle, so we had it and a break. And now again, and so I'm hoping we'll be able to, at least start to look at, it won't be quite a trend yet, because we need at least three or more, right? So after this year, I think we'll be able to see a little bit. And then hopefully in three years, we'll be able to really start to see a trend and pattern, what that looks like.
And that makes more of a difference for us. And for you guys, you don't care as much as you guys, as much as you guys go to some individual students and helping them. And so it's more for public consumption, just because it helps us visualize what's going on. And I know you guys probably, yeah, we don't really need that for what we're doing, but you know.
It's a good healthy indicator for us.
Yeah.
And of course, science, again. Above, and I talked about this last time about just our fifth grade. Fifth grade is still about the state average hour. We, we also recognize that as an area that we need to grow in. And we just started the process at SIS and we're starting to put together a protocol, framework to improve what science looks like at that level and trying to integrate, do a better job of integrating science with literacy as well as what are the hands-on experiments? What are the those things that they need to do to meet some of those other skills, say skill that's in.
That was what I was asking, you know, how much you guys, it's obviously a statewide problem. What are the things that they think so much at the lower level falls into experiential way and science side?
And we, we've recognized the challenges back to what kind of, how much time, we just put a lot of time and effort into literacy, which is really, really important. Math is really, really important, but this is really, really important too. So trying to be more efficient with our time as a instructional time that we have within the classroom by doing more integration, which it should be. I think it's an archaic practice at times where we're, especially at the elementary level, we're putting some buckets. And hope now it's science time, now we're to switch and transition to math time, you know? And now we're trying to look at a different model and integrate science and social studies into our literacy block. But it's a little bit tricky. We're, we're, we're gonna do some experimenting and piloting this year of a couple of ideas in the crowd.
Yeah, we can bring some intermediate teachers in midway through the year, just let you know how's it going and what's working well and what's not.
Again, I don't I'd be interested in knowing if something's going to be done. I know it's just focused on, we say it's more, it's more science-based, young adult, this age group, books, you know, is one I saw was this book about purpose. It covers in a nice way that kids will engage with, but it also has educational aspects and more science related. So it's just an interesting, it's an interesting approach. I if you need resources.
We'll be purchasing resources. Yeah.
Traditionally, we've been using the vast science growth from the grant, the grant. But again, it requires a lot of time, a lot, lot of setup. I remember I used the kids when I was teaching and it's a lot of time for setup, implementation. So we're just kind of being thinking that trying something new this year, the interview without those vast science, that's where we're working with our science console as well as literacy console to figure out what that might look like. And designing what, or defining what that framework is.
From an engagement standpoint, I'm engaging with the leadership team, the teacher leaders in the building. Are we, was this kind of, was this kind of? I was, I was in all hands on that sort of discussion.
Right now, right now, it's, right now, we have our PLC facilitators, principal at the table. Instructional coach at the table.
When we say PLC facilitator, that's, that's a representative from a grade level. So we have a fourth grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, the instructional coach, a couple of A A people, the principal. Yeah.
So they have a plan right now to have regular meetings each month. Have study, design, implement, study, design, implement, come back and kind of reflect that on what that looks like. And then again, identifying what resources do we need as we look ahead, what resources are we even need to purchase, but also what we already have is available to us, if we're somebody's hands-on types of experiments.
Do we only get state data or can we drill out, like, could you draw the WAMAC?
Yes, yes. And we can bring that to you. When Josh was actually our A A rep, he would get us the WAMAC. And then what we would do is list all the grade levels. Leave out the name of the school, but we would plug Solon in wherever they fit. Yes. So you know, we're number one in the WAMAC here and you see all the other scores from other schools, but you don't know what schools they are. We may be number three here. So that's data that we can get our hands on.
And so it is, and honestly, it is public data that I will, I will, for a while, we can go in school and across the state of Iowa, we can look at it. See where they, see where they fall. Cool tools within the school performance profile that's open to any, any community, even for any.
You can see the school, but you just can't, like, you can't public sense.
Yeah. Well, we can, all of us could see the school. We just don't want to be a, a bad neighbor and yeah, show some, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. We mentioned this this morning with our staff that we not only provided, you know, just a well, if you, if you talk about across the state, you can see how we compare assessment wise, but out of three hundred and forty school districts across Iowa. I would challenge someone to come up with more than single digits that actually had kids in person for the full ten eighty hours. I mean, our snow days were snow days and we made the time up. We didn't take virtual days. I mean, we were all ten eighty. And our students and teachers' families made the best of it. We also provided all of our activities last year, which resulted in five conference titles. Seven district titles. Three state runner-up titles. Two musicals, a play. Dominated the art show again. Multiple concerts. And then of course, our, our competitions that we put on. So it was, it was a good year for our students and families. Try, we're looking forward to so much this year, just building on all that.
Forty minutes. So particularly this month, Chris and I have been working on a schedule to try and lay out just some logical points and do some touch-ins for when we move into next year, where it makes logical sense for policy reporter for, and so Chris has sent me some suggestions on that. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But the other movement next year, the goal would be kind of, maybe a little more formal, you know, at least reporting whenever you want, but we'll have specific check-ins. It seems like we have months where we give a lot of stuff on this and then other months where you don't have much at all. So we'll, we'll move forward with that probably starting the next month or so, once we kind of share that around. So. Consent agenda. Second by Coons. R I P for audit services.
So Pat went ahead and you can see she sent out one, two, three, four, five, six, nine of them. And we had one that returned it. And that was Chapman CPA. We are currently with Chapman. We've been pleased with them. We've got a good relationship with them. They've pretty thorough and that would be our recommendation to continue with them.
I think it's, Pat has told us in the past, the, the market for this service is, is, is everyone that's in it is very, is very busy. And so you know, most people, their perception is unless we're unhappy and we actually actively tell people we're, we're looking to change, people don't think it's worth the effort to put in bits. So so I don't think we were surprised that we wanted to get Chapman's back because we've been happy with them, but it does make it easy. And they've done a good job since they've gotten back. So. Motion to approve Chapman CPA for audits. Motion by, is this one year, three years? Three years, right?
Correct.
Motion by Coons. Second by Wolf. Second by Wolf. Any discussion? Thanks to Pat for doing the work, labor to make this happen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, propose motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up on our list is the conflict handled by the state and we have to figure out whether we're gonna move with the conflict or shift around. Uh September board meeting is slated for same night as September varsity football competition. Uh you guys are supposed to look at calendars and figure out if you can have a forum on the six people who moved our regular standing board. So that's where we're at here, discussions. I know you're not gonna be, I know we're down one already. That's, that's a way I present the way I have. So what was your suggestion?
So the option Monday or Tuesday or Tuesday or Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, do you want to just go earlier on Thursday, do you want to do a morning one? I mean, you don't do too much in September, SaAC approval, modified, a little book approval.
Yeah, the only challenge I've got with that is that it's already on the monthly business unit, although we not getting a lot of attendance at our meetings, we need to a, to a day time or another morning, this uh can be a little bit more challenging.
If we go earlier in the week, does that challenge anything that's to pay?
No, none of these, by Monday can have the results, I think, but most of them are.
So I, I guess I've got those strong feelings one way or the other, I just wanna call out the issues, I guess the only issue I would have is I would not be available on that Tuesday. Earlier in the week, uh Tuesday would be out.
Monday, we'd be pushing it to do it on Monday.
So it sounds like Wednesday would be difficult.
Wednesday is a day we have traditionally, Wednesday would have to be uh, it would have to be.
You can stay awake in Wednesday.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have to do it, we'd have to do like a four thirty meeting, so we'd be done before the six o'clock.
Okay, but is there a reason we can't do the Thursday? Or maybe?
Time to just be rolling that.
Right.
Yeah. Sometimes meetings are thirty, seven, thirty, nothing.
It's just a varsity meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Superdining.
No, no, that's what, I mean, I think we had to be careful with, just act like this is a football change.
Right, for sure.
We have had meetings on nights with that other stuff going on, not the state effects, multiple people at the table. So I'm absolutely, I was the one that brought this up and said I think we need to at least talk about moving it, I would be, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I, I, I would whatever you want me to go.
I guess it's, it's good to call it out, you know, we have one board member who has a passion, the superintendent's child is playing and I hate to, I hate to tell him he has to skip the game to be here. Tony asked us a lot of stuff, we have meetings long ready and so.
And, and no offense to Dan, but if you went at four thirty, if it's a short meeting, it'd be done by five thirty, then I should do a play. I would just do that. Just go earlier than that.
So as long as we're doing it this far in advance, I can move it on my schedule.
So Thursday, the sixteenth, the four thirty?
Assuming somebody motions.
Any motions to the meeting, September, four thirty on the sixteenth?
Motion by Jevica, is that second by Wolf? Any discussion? I appreciate everyone's flexibility.
We should do it on the same day.
So we'll have it at four thirty, uh maybe we will, uh my agenda, uh as is normally the case in September. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose, motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh information lines.
I'm gonna, yep, I'm gonna ask Josh to speak to this. This is something that it's, it's a big, big initiative that we're going to just step slowly. Uh, building capacity, not only within the district, but within the community too. Um, as an admin team, Josh led some learning uh for us last year, we read some books. We spoke to um someone who's been through this, a consultant, a solution tree representative that's, that's been through this, someone who's led their own district in this initiative. We um met with SaAC, um I'll just let Josh go, it's, it's just an initiative, he can explain what's going on.
Look this up, just a second, sorry. Is this a Solon initiative or is it statewide initiative?
Solon.
Okay.
Well, I can talk to that a little bit because a lot of districts have, some of the hot topic there has been the last like five to ten years, I don't see graphics. Recently, it's gone through that process on their other school districts in Iowa, they mentioned finds a portrait of a graduate. They've gone through to pay this, an actual firm consultant vendor to come in, do the whole thing for them. This is actually, this idea of a portrait of a graduate really is the first phase of several phases, about ten phases as we talked with our consultant uh from Solution Tree. But his, the consultant that we've um are using comes from Adelaide Stevenson High School District in Illinois. Birthplace of PLCs, um but it's not just this thing, portrait of a graduate, yep, okay, look, that's great, now we have this fun little poster and this is where it is. Uh, he really talks about it's a living and breathing document that is infused to our everyday instruction, assessment, feedback practices, how we work with kids and support that. So it's kind of a driving force, kind of like, you know, our mission, vision statement in the district, it really, but it drills down to being more student-centered and that's the most important thing. And it really is looking at this idea of taking what we believe about um education, learning, about what we want our core students and then determining how do we operationalize that? What does that look like? So if we're saying we believe in lifelong learning, what does that look like for our kids? But this portrait of a graduate really is, is part of these phases and I talked about this, this um year and a half ago, I think, to, to the board and talked about this idea of efficiency. And that's where this comes from, this proficiency-based pathways of proficiency. Work that we've, we're kind of dabbling in, trying to really get into the theory and demonstration and that's why we've tapped into this consultant, come in and talk about here's kind of the research behind it and what, what he's done, what their district has done, uh provided some, that's really honestly some demonstration of what it kind of looks like and what the vision really is. But it's putting all these pieces together. Um, one of the, one of the uh components, one of the phases is actually examining grading practices. While we um, we align to standard-based grading and Solon, um they align to evidence-based grade, which is just, I feel like is a step up from standard-based grade. Because it's not just about the standards and it's not just about the little procedures, there's still some of those procedures that hold some things that, you know, give kids an opportunity to reassess and um and all that. But it really is, and he talks about it being more of an internship, that I'm actually engaging with you as a student, we're having a conversation about how do you feel things are going, tell me about where you think you, you know, based on where I want you to be, where you think you are, and then really having that conversation, how I help get to it. And, and so that grading piece, he talks about evidence-based grading and unfortunately, I think we kind of led with that a little bit too much and now that, now there's some confusion that, oh, now it's not standard-based grading, we're not ready to do this. That's not what we're trying to accomplish.
It's, it's just refining.
It's refining our current practice. And like I said to the staff yesterday, it really is just about good practice. And so each one of these components within this um framework, and the number one, right, the biggest component is defining portrait of a graduate. What are the attributes that we want our Solon grads to come away with when they go off into college, um to career, wherever? So um, actually really excited about this and, and again, this is something that as an admin team, we've really wrestled with. And, and some of the conversations I've had with Zach, I've really spearheaded this idea that, and he really um, he's gonna kind of take the charge on this a little bit, but um he really felt like it's bigger than this grading, it's bigger than this proficiency base, it's, it's what we want our kids to be when they leave us. Um, so on Tuesday, um our consultant was with us, took uh our PLC facilitator leaders through uh exercise and it really wasn't if then exercise, if we believe in these things about learning and about school, about education, about what we want for our kids and what does that look like in practice, what, how do we, how do we make that, that thing happen? Um, so we did that Tuesday um with our leaders, teacher leaders, Tuesday night with SaAC, so we got some inherent input there. Uh, yesterday we had all six twelve um staff go through that process. And so right now we have quite a catalog of just different ideas. Zach's plan is of the course of the next two weeks to get every single ninth through eleventh graders um to go through the same protocol. And what do you give their voice up to, because you really feel strongly that you gotta have their voices up to you.
All right, I just, I just know this, and I, you're saying this, and this can't just be a vision, a, a vision for the district. We need the community, we need the students, we, because if we think we only want our students to be, it's not what our students want to be. And they're not, there's no coming together. And then also our community has to also, you know, I mean, this, you know, we, this is, you know, a free problem school and, you know.
Try, it's gonna take time.
For sure.
Yep, yep.
And ultimately, it's this idea of becoming self-aware for learning. Student, I want you to be independent, um as we go off after you graduate, we want you to be independent. Um, our, our consultant Tony just gave a statistic from some of the research we did was about fifty percent of kids who start college without touch. So that's a real, that's a real concern that as they walk, how do we want our kids to go all the way through? And they're, they're more, they're gonna be even more successful if they can stick out college, be independent. Some of the conversations we had too, really was, we can, we prepare our kids, and I think Davis, you talked about this outside, we can prepare our kids in, in school and they get straight A's or they're really successful, but then they leave us and go to college or even career and they're crumble because they don't have those other skills that they need to be successful. Because we're really good at content, I mean, we look at our access data, great, fantastic, now it's time to start. Okay, let's really think about where we are in terms of the attributes, the real attributes we want our kids, that we need.
The, the discussion from SaAC with the community, what struck me was, yeah, like um self-reliance. I mean, that's important to be successful, whether, you know, career tech, four-year college career, just that. And so, you know, Tony said, if that's what we believe, what does that look like with our instruction? How are we growing that in kids through our instruction? What are we doing in the classroom differently? Well, think about the, the blended learning presentation last year, that little switch in pedagogy, what, one thing that the teachers were pointed out that presented to us was we're not just teaching kids math, but we're teaching them that self-reliance, how to go, hey, don't, don't wait for me to tell you the answer or give you the resource to find the answer. How, how can you find that on your own? How can we build the skills so that you seek that on your own? Well, we start building that in, in the elementary school and all the way up through college, career, whatever, beyond post-secondary, be- beyond us, they're gonna be successful.
Well, this communication with teachers, because kids live in problems that are ways, and we do something.
Yes.
And sometimes when you sit in front of the class, it's like, this is how you solve this problem. And kids may come up, it's completely different to get there, and that's okay. You know, um and sometimes that's hard, that's hard, especially if you're trying to teach me self-reliance.
Yes, yes.
That's it, you know, I mean, that's a whole different, it ain't a great.
Yeah, we do a great, great job at Solon supporting kids.
Right.
And, and then they go, they leave us and those supports aren't always there. At a big, major university, they may not get that support, so. At a big, major university, they may not get that support, so. Yes. Yeah.
Cause they're there.
Sure. Yeah.
Sometimes we're too good to help.
So this is where it's like, so we, we have to build the understanding of what we're doing. And then we have to s- that, start building that. Change in our pedagogy and our instructions, just so, it's gonna be a multi-year process. But, uh, Josh has teamed us up with, um, this Tony Rible, who's done it in Adelaide Stevens, he's solution trees. He's already spent three days, well, he spent a lot of time zooming with us last year, prepping us and building our knowledge.
Very credible, um, in his position.
But, but that two hundred, two hundred plus teachers, but it over a seven year period is that? It, I mean, a small group at a time and he just moved out from departments and just, yes. Got to a critical mass and then went, but he built up.
I think the thing that was, um, was most appealing and impressive is. The, um. The, the way that they move is very intentional. Deliberate, thoughtful, um. Gathering people's input and bringing them around the table, um, and allowing that pushback to happen. But then just keep moving forward. But the thing I like about this most is it really is a process. Uh, hey, we're gonna do this initiative, it's gonna happen in a couple of years, we're gonna have everybody on board and. And now we're, now we're doing, there's a lot of replying, there's a lot of accountability built in the, in the system. Um, and really, we're just at the very beginning, um, really understanding the theory. Looking at that through the demonstration from our consultant, what that looks like, it's a lot of really good, it's, I mean, incredible examples. And then really thinking about, okay, how do we implement this, but bring people along or ready to be brought along. And, um, yesterday, we really dug into, again, portrait of a graduate. Looking at our curriculum a little bit differently, you know, our standards, re- redefining what standard is, and as we get down this path, we'll talk more about this. It's really challenged, um, our teachers and create some disappointments. Uh, some are kind of, I think things are pushing for others, but not very. We're looking at, um, we'll be looking at some rubrics and scales, proficiency scales, that's what. Pathways proficiency is, we, we just touched on that briefly, we're gonna go a little bit deeper on that later. Um, but then assessment practices, what is that really, what type of question, doesn't always have to be a, an event test. Really is building this assessment, really is about building a body of evidence and providing feedback to kids all the way along the way. Um, and really, he talks about it as, what's their story? When you get to the, when you get to the end, what's their story? But then really focusing on that professional judgment and not relying on a percent, a point. For good look at five, but it's based on what you've shown, you've shown here. Do we, you're at this A level or this level two? And their, their, um. Grade scale is different, um, they don't use percentages in the numbers. They only use numbers as a, as just kind of a marker, to kind of say, here's where you are, and provide kids feedback all the way along. So it's a little bit different than what we've been trying to standardize, I'd say. But a lot different in some cases with standard based grade, I think it's so much better for kids because it's more about the. Performance, the process, feedback, and just getting better. So that's why we're kind of going along this path and exploring this, because I think it'll take us to the next level. Um, and not just about just academics or.
Questions? Thanks, Josh, people said, wonder if you go through this process, I think it's important, uh. We've had a conversation about. Every district has the challenges, we need kids to know that, so they know what they want when they leave, and so some of them just kind of go with the flow and they go off to college. But they, what they want, so I think, in this portrait of a graduate, it can help us, help them focus on. What skills that they have and what, where they're actually happy because, you know, this, because that'll do this. Anyway, if, if we can't align them with where, where their interests are, you know, what their skills, what their strengths and weaknesses are. So I think making our kids more self-aware, more self-reliant, and they're willing to. Make their decisions and tackle what they, if they really wanna be, is important, uh. It's an important aspect of this. Uh, next up on our agenda is. Catching up on our board learning. So we've got two more things tonight. If you don't like the topic, you can blame me, because Chris had two other ones picked out, and I just received the stats, so. I thought it's always good to talk about finances, we just came off the end of this year and. We'll get, we'll be increasingly getting more numbers from, from Pat as we.
Which one are we doing?
As we talk about the, the last fiscal year, and then the other ones on advocacy as we, as we start heading towards, uh.
Yeah. School board members do not have, right, a school finding, uh, have to be school finance experts. They should however, be familiar with the terms and structure of school finance, communicate. The district's fiscal conditions to the public and make responsible decisions at the board table. Let's see. The discussion's a quick, uh, framework is a quick overview of some big basic, basic principles. Consideration of aspects of school finance in the law in three parts. Nine true and false, a specific scenario, and a whole board discussion to. To compose eight clear definitions for must-know terms.
So, okay, that's our true and false questions. Let's see if we can get these right.
After you choose true or false, explain to your fellow board members why you made that choice. Then click the bar below each statement to find the correct answer.
This year begins July first, and that is, I'm due to, you're gonna hear that that is true. Uh, therefore, the school budget has until June thirtieth to turn out its budget, I think that's false.
Nope.
You went too soon.
Oh, I did, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, we have April fifteenth, I was, I knew it was April, I was trying to remember what the date was, I knew it was before. I knew it was before our regular board meeting in April, because we had to meet early to, to get it approved. That was false.
Iowa law creates several funds for school districts.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yeah. And that is complex, explaining to people that, you know, you can have money to do one thing and not another is a very. How can you have money to do this when you can't do that? Well.
Right.
How can you fill this? That comes in a different pot of money. It is.
The largest expenditures from the general fund for any school district are salaries and benefits.
What other stuff is in the general fund? Fuel, heating, cooling.
And so it's all just like day-to-day bills.
Yes. Yeah, materials. There's things that are general and then things that we.
There's the thing you can buy there and the things you have to buy there, right, so, so that, it's that delicate balance that. Pat and Davis go through, which is, you know, how do I spend the right amount for each fund, because each, each pot of money has a different. Uh, limit on it, in terms of what you can spend it on.
Okay. True, there we go. The current year's budget is largely determined by counting the number of students enrolled in the district on October first of the same year. Yeah, previous year, there's also delay.
Which is beneficial for strength in the first, that are for growth directions.
Yeah. The combined district cost is determined by multiplying a school district's cost per pupil. By its enrollment numbers.
Well, the money is for people, but I'm trying to figure what they mean by district cost, the word is just odd. Yeah, we, we get, we get the money, we get their supplemental state aid, and that's based on per pupil. Per pupil amount, and also then triggers property tax rates and what courses it states. And then you get the enrollment in it, because it's, it's also not just pure enrollment, it's not. I think we're guessing false.
You got it. Cost per pupil by certified enrollment and adding special education, other supplemental waiting, state categorical supplements, AEA flow-through.
But then also you lose students to the overall.
Yeah.
Yeah. This one's an easy one. You sit through our, uh, spreadsheet with Pat, you understand all the intricacies that are flowing there, so.
The unspent authorized budget balance is a carryover. Balance that must be used for ongoing school improvements, like paying for an extra reading teacher.
New, there's no money there. Suspending authority. If you had the money, you could spend it. You can't connect. Were you getting in trouble like that?
Did he really get in trouble though?
Yeah, I didn't want that trouble.
What was the punishment?
Uh, they took the state that the district, temporarily, but they're on super tempers, isn't it? Yeah, how long? Uh, the, the one, the one that they, the one that they placed. State owned the district, but, uh, chose to retire. And did they bring the other one back? Uh, so that they, I think they, they kept the one state appointed as the interim. They killed with a plan, I think the state maybe forgave a little bit, but like, only after they, it's like they sued us out, sued us out.
He was directly defying, yes. The financial records and transactions of a school district must be audited each year.
That must be true since you just.
Spending authority is the only measure determining what a district can spend in the general fund. False. Spending authority is certainly the most important element of determining a school district's total budget, but other financial health measures are important too.
You know, you go to check with Pat and see if she's happy with us.
Yeah.
You got all these right. We're off to Dreamfield.
Dreamfield. Yeah. The Dreamfield Board has approved some significant cuts in order to adopt a balanced budget for next year. The board was unanimous in its approval of the cuts. The public is not pleased, a small influential group of teachers. Two of whom were victims of the cuts, and a group of parents from a building that has been closed. Has been, uh, marshaling support over the spring and summer to pressure the board to rescind the cuts. They have targeted the July board meeting as their time to approach the board. With petitions in hand, the public will have a chance to speak at the open forum in July. And the next item on the agenda will be review of di- district financial condition. The superintendent wants the board to be vocal during this review. She asked the board to be clear about the factors that influence their fiscal decision-making. The superintendent has strategically scheduled a learning workshop. On school finance for the board for late June, no decisions will be made at the meeting, it is informational only. She's been working with the board president and the business manager to prepare the agenda. The goal of the session is to review key fiscal influences which have led to the cuts. What would be some items you would imagine the superintendent would want the board to be familiar with for the meeting? Help the Dreamfield superintendent identify topics for the board work session. Imagine Dreamfield is your district, the board can't know everything, so identify key facts it should focus on.
Your salaries and.
Solvency ratio.
Unemployment balance, your trends on those, whatever the board has set as targets for financial tracking, we should be reminded of what. What it said and just, and then where you're at, I'll just, because I, I imagine the spot you're, you're looking at that and you're. Unspent authorized balances dropping, you're, potentially your. Salaries as a percent of, uh, the budget are going up, it's, it's, it's not a great spot to be in a district.
I think because you're gonna have a very local opposition, maybe you wanna start a security case stuff. Just so they get the bigger picture of.
That, that's a good point, a lot of times that district says, Dreamfield was described here, is as a result of declining enrollment. Yeah.
What, what's causing the damage or cuts?
Right, yeah, for sure. Transportation's also going up.
Right.
Enrollment going down or stagnant. But it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, I think you gotta look at why you are where you are. And then, you know, the worst stake responsibility, if they put themselves there. You know, we increased all these teacher salaries five years ago, and now we're in trouble.
You know, if you, if, if you saw the trend of declining enrollment and ignored attrition.
Right.
Which attrition is always the best way. Yeah. A better way.
There would be a building being closed, you wanna see, again, laying out why, what was the. Costs, how much was saved?
I guess one of the questions is how much you're saving, how many, how many teaching positions are you saving by closing the building? Yeah, obviously, potentially your transportation costs, being up or down, depending on where that building's located relative to population centers. Um, but I, I think you're, you guys are exactly right, uh, you gotta lay out how you got here, uh, people understand. They make, they still may not agree. But the message probably at the end has gotta be, you know, what we're trying to do is provide, we're in opportunities for students. And we've got limited resources, and we've gotta find a way to maximize those, and so. It may be one of those things where you say, I don't like what we've had to do either, but we've gotta do what's best for the students that we've got. Not focused on, maybe it's fully closed, you guys may have all graduated from there, but it's the least efficient building in the district. And, you know, we've got other buildings that are more serviceable and.
Yeah, I think other facts are, if this is something you didn't see coming. This is where we're headed right now, it shouldn't be like a surprise, you know what I mean?
Right, good, yes.
You should know a year ahead of time, when things are turning down.
It's, it's like, we're looking at a path, where you look at, you look at trends, which is, you know, you can project it out, and it's like, you know. Projected out, it's, you don't want that point where you go bankrupt.
Right.
To be, to be, to be soon, you know, the problem is with trends, you know, you can't, they're at, at, they can eventually get out far enough that your. Your margin of error is such that, you know, you can be in great shade, or you could be underwater. Uh, and your goal is every year just gonna keep that five-year projection in mind and, and try to keep, uh, keep in the center of it, so you stay above water. Will be poor, and that's where you, you can get in trouble as a district if you're not looking at those projections and say, oh, we're fine this year. Well, you're always fine this year, it's, the problem is, it's a lot easier to, to adjust the small things now. Maybe we're not, you know, maybe we're in Western Iowa, we're not taking a field trip to Iowa City every year for, you know, the. To go to the museum there, they were gonna go to Des Moines, or they were there at Omaha, so you may change some small things that have minimal impact. But have bigger impacts in the long run, so.
Those are ISB's considerations, I think we hit those.
Put it as a one-year blend.
Solvency ratios that were really high, purposely was spending on, for them.
Our students' future.
Okay, we'll read scenarios and then consider advocacy discussion and action steps. Can you as an individual do to influence the work? Can your board do to strongly impact the actions and legislate, of legislatures and the governor? Is this even possible? The Iowa Board, School Board Association knows local boards can make a difference. We can assure, at the very least, your board will develop meaningful relationships and understandings that will make a difference. Scenario one. Let's begin by reading through the scenarios, you read through the scenario, consider the various interests expressed by members of the Dreamfield Board. And discuss how those interests might resonate with your board members. Question, whose job is it before continuing to read the scenario? Please pause and consider why advocacy might be seen as a whole board responsibility, or why is it a worthwhile consideration for the whole board?
Cause it's long.
It's not on the slide.
Yep. He was asking next.
Okay. So identify at least one or two powerful talking points that your board might develop regarding each of the issues, areas identified when you have determined your talking points and a given click on the bulleted area on the next slide and see what Dreamfield's developed.
So these are the areas which.
Oh, did I go? Okay.
Picking area and we're supposed to call them their own talking points and then you're supposed to put this in the game. So where was, which we were, we always talk about mental health, but it's something that we're pushing. So what would be our talking point if we were trying to advocate the mental health issue? You know, we've already done.
Well, obviously, the last year has been incredible stress, you know, just the state. I mean, I know from my, you know, medical people, they are. Medical facilities staff, all the others in schools.
I think the question always, you know, as I talked about. The challenge is. Latching under the, the funny part is always, it seems like it's a, it's a no-win situation every time we put out that pass. I had this question, how do you, how do you get them to put a little bit more in for something specific like, you know, the, the, they, people complained about the transportation costs, talked about the equity associated with that. And so the state said, okay, we're going to try and work this out. Gradually added more, specifically focused towards transportation to resolve that issue, right? I wonder if something like that is more of a focus, which is, you know, this is a, this is an area where, you know, our students will need this and we're committed to provide and support, but there's cost associated with that. So rather, rather focus on general, general fund might, someone else today. Talk about, you know, you know, other ways to provide, you know, you might be, where AA signs, provide that support while we can send us to local providers to provide mental health support. Or the state can take over the, some of the spring tools if we want to pay. I wanted to start. Yep, wait, provide a, there may be cost savings across the whole state if we can do, take an approach where we, there's more holistic statewide approach to dealing with this rather than like every district solving on their own. And as I was pointing out, you identify as a possible solution to, rather than just covering it with a broad base of funding. As you identified, why don't they consider funding this state? Yeah, which is, which you have to do, right?
Just, and I was thinking about, and I think some news, local news, they're doing a deal. We went into consortium with the AA. AA got money. And they decided, well, you know, we could help some rural schools. And so we went in with six other schools, seven of us, and with JFAST. So, you know, our counselors do a great job providing lessons for all kids. We've got some small groups, we've got some individual, but then there's just those need. Some kids just need more, more than what we can provide as a school. We don't have the resources. We can't afford the resources. We can't, we can't hire our own social worker, our own K, or all this. So through this consortium, state money that the AA got, they are basically putting money into JFAST so that we can have those services. They're using that money now after the pilot's been so successful and they've offered it to all thirty-two schools, districts in Grantwood, which would be another good. You're right, because legislatures get bombarded. We need more money. Well, what do you need it for? And what are, what would be a solution? Yeah.
Well, I think it's, I mean, it's easy to say we need more money.
Yes.
Better to go to the state and say, or here's a solution, here's a possible way you could, you know, the public, public ideas as opposed to just taking it, you know.
Nice. But when you step back and think about it, it is kind of disastrous, all the different, I mean, just, think of just all the different silos, all the, we've gotten where we've muddied the water so much. I shouldn't say we, but just how things are funded, it just makes it extra complicated. Not any easier than when we did specific topics like this. It's hard even by mental health. Counselors and stuff, right? I mean, not many people are coming up sort of.
But the board supervisors have decided, if the problem had been, we get thirty-two million dollars, they just don't want that. Just they're asking for input as the board should spend this. So maybe we can start to think about, you know, that standpoint. I would reach out and have to say, listen, you got an extra million. We've got some needs up here because they really don't know what they're going to do. They came out public there earlier in the week and said, we're setting on this money. We got to pick another one yet. We got to do one more of these. Oh, we got to pick another one? Yep, we have to. Our assignment was to do two of them. So which one do we want to have the next? I was thinking, we want to talk about sharing because sharing is probably the one we, we talked least about.
Oh, okay, that's, that's where.
Well, you should, it's not just superintendent, it's other roles. You can share, you can share.
A counselor, a superintendent, a curriculum director, a transportation director.
What about Robert with the language stuff, right?
No, not yet, but I would imagine that might be on the horizon. It might be something good to advocate for. Sharing the counseling position with Kirkwood, which that doesn't get recognized right now.
When we talk about efficiencies, sometimes it's like, you've got something, yeah. You've, you've got a need for some extra people. So even if we think about it as we grow, you know, think about some folks in the business office. Do we need another person in the business office? Maybe we don't need a full person. Maybe Rob Burner doesn't need a full person, right? Can we share a person that provides, provides that? And so I think advocating for opportunities for doing that. You know, we did one year where we shared a nutrition director a few years ago where we thought we could be viable, but it didn't work out. But, you know, I think there are opportunities in there if you think about it, because as districts either grow or shrink, you get into the odd sizes where.
Where, where they're helping districts and, and they have a list of what you would get incentivized for. The state does under sharing. And so let's say we're going to share. Let's say we've decided to share a curriculum director. Well, that might be recognized from the state. The incentive might be equivalent to three students. So you would share a curriculum director with the district. So right off the bat, you would save fifty percent because you're sharing the cost. And then the state would kick in twenty-one thousand dollars to each district. Because they, they would, they would, does that make sense? They add students to your account as a way to incentivize you to share.
Some of those that goes down over time, right?
Over time, yes.
It helps, it helps ease into the process.
Yeah.
So that's the incentive.
That's the incentive.
So here, like, we've always talked about adding another order. So, I mean, is that something like saying, so we're going to get French and we need to expand.
So you could, but I don't, there's not an incentive for it. So you could do a share. And so there's nothing to do with sharing, but there's also other positions that are incentivizing it.
So there's, okay, so we're basically, we're looking at things that incentivize.
Or, or just making it easier to do the transition. What, what makes it worthwhile at this short term to do it? Because there's a, there's an inefficiency with sharing. So how do you operationalize that and then do it by adding students? So.
Good question. It doesn't. The, the really, really small school districts are, are sharing a superintendent. You see a lot of that.
Chemistry teacher, or they're shipping them somewhere else.
They're sharing teachers. It's, it doesn't get incentivized. I mean, you still save half because you're splitting the cost of a teacher. You just don't get the bonus.
Fifteen things on the list that they do.
Probably ten to fifteen. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There for a while Benton, Benton Dorf and Nora Scott were sharing an HR director that's on the list.
I'm sure I think Karen's up at CPU is a good one.
Yep.
He was her superintendent, but I almost thought he might have been someone else.
Might have been spring, spring, could have been another district. Yeah.
Like in the Prairie, aren't they sharing with, or Sigourney and Kyoto?
Kyoto's on their own now. Highland was sharing with Lone Tree. Now they're separate. Pekin and Sigourney are sharing and they've shared for a while. I believe a superintendent is six. So that's six kids. So there's, for a, a, a district like Pekin and Sigourney, six kids, that's forty-two thousand dollars apiece. To each. So they get forty-two thousand dollars and then they split the cost of a superintendent. So they, you know, pay.
So it's like the district pays you and the children are not in cash.
Well, like for some of those Peter Casey, when I was from, when I was governor, they shared with other state, but then they sense that now merged with that.
So how do we communicate to legislators? Reflection.
Once you're grading them in, it's important, right?
Yeah.
Emails and.
Have they re-districted already?
I don't think so.
When will they do that? They're supposed to have it out. It's going to be delayed, right? If that's under the news, September fifteenth was the date that we're having the founders out and then at that point they're out. So, yeah, so back to sharing superintendent management generates eight students.
Eight, sorry. That's fifty-six thousand.
Resource management, transportation management, operational maintenance management, classified, recent management personnel, sharing five students. I don't know if those people should be the districts that share or is that per district? Curriculum director, and school council generate three students, that's three to each district.
Mm-hmm.
And the maximum school district can get is twenty-one of two weeks.
Some districts share multiple things, like Davis County just took on Moulton Udel in sharing superintendent, curriculum director, and I believe transportation director. So.
So, yeah, you asked, so I, I kind of, you know, as I said, there's, you know, it's, it's a lot of those manager positions, you know, where it makes sense to do it. So I don't know if that makes sense for us, but it's an option to look at, so. Okay.
That's communicating with legislators.
So it's, well, it's, it's communicating staff, board, administrations, we're all on the same page. I think, I think we do, we do a good job of between the board and the administration. I think, you know, whether it's, we would probably look at it, you know, is, is letting the more broadly, you know, do we sit down with the economists and tell them, you know, this, these are our priorities for the year, this is why, you know, that might help get a broader understanding so those people advocate, they might know what, if they see a legislature, they can, they can mention some of them. So we do a lot of direct legislative lobbying and communications. We have our legislators here. And we do emails when it seems appropriate as topics come up when ISB has passed as we, as things are being considered, we, we do a, we should help be, you know, the local legislature, sometimes not great effect. But we try. Organizing engaging community resource. I think that's something we really have to try and we've stood up. Try to deliver to our local legislators that we haven't really felt the need. People we've had have seemed fairly responsive to our needs. It's a try and put pressure on them. Our problem is, is the broader legislature than, rather than necessarily our local legislators in terms of having them be supported. I don't know how to fix that.
Yep.
Talking points.
Dan. It's interesting to see the testing data, obviously, and what those numbers look like. I wish to say we test more science than just three grades. You know, just especially if we're going to track cohorts, that's going to be hard to track over the years. But, you know, obviously, depressed with our students, not surprised. It was in our homes for sure. You know, obviously questions, you know, how much benefit being in the school was and all those things that were tough decisions last year.
Rick?
Yeah, a lot of good things tonight. I also have a kind of focus a little bit on Jess. I don't think it was the speaker that, that certainly thought it has some issues and for her to come in here and say that she loves her building and she's getting hunched from the kids, that's her.
Jamie?
I think we're excited about all of our teachers and staff and that we have so many threats to do that. So this day and later, you know, culture here and so the rest, exciting.
I think you did a great job working with graduate, I mean, she gives a credit, but just how much we're trying to reach out and figure out what it is and what we can do to these kids, prepare for college, trades, workforce, individualize it. So a lot goes into that. So, so. what we can do to these kids, help prepare for college, trades, just workforce, individualize it, so, a lot goes into that, so, so.
And I'll just, I guess, I'll touch back on some of the stuff that Jess talked about, you know. We all know that teaching is a, is a challenging field and I appreciate all the effort that they put into trying to come up with a plan for, help support our teachers that are both new to the field and into our district. That great district and just, what we can do to help our staff feel fulfilled when they're here, I think it's important to help us maintain a great staff over the long term. It's increasingly important, as we know, there's a shortage of, of teachers in the field, as, as the teaching population can use the age. Being able to retain teachers that are in our district is going to be important as we move forward, so I think everything we can do to, to support our teaching staff is going to be important, so. That's my thoughts. With that, our next board read is now the sixteenth of September at four thirty PM right here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. For move, motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Alaska, all in favor, do you think if I say aye, aye, we are adjourned.